It's Monday night, April 27, 2020, at 7:01 PM. And tonight, we will have a special session, followed by the Committee of the Whole and Finance and Personnel Committee. Our special session, the first item of agenda item is to establish a quorum, and all members of council are present. We now have an ordinance for second reading. This is ordinance 5920, an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Mizeley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 05920.
Second.
Thank you. The reason for suspension is that there are some refunds that are due and that we would like to process, as well as a grant that the municipal court received, and this allows them to do more of their business online. And some of the hardware that they would like to purchase is disappearing quickly. So they would like to get this pushed through so that they can go ahead and purchase this, the hardware that they need. And this is not money from the city. This is a grant that they received from the Supreme Court of Ohio. Thank you, President Mizeley.
Okay, we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Okay, the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Mizeley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 5920.
Second.
Thank you for the reasons stated a few minutes ago.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Any additional comments or questions? If not, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We'll now go ahead and be, follow our usual rules where we would have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Okay, we are adjourned. We'll now immediately begin the Committee of the Whole, and our first item of business is the solid waste discussion. We had some discussion a few weeks ago in committee, and then also in our regular session last week, had additional discussion. And this follows on the work of a committee from earlier this year of Sam Crowell, David Rigg, our co-director Kathleen Sullivan, and Alan Ladd. And Sam, would you like to lead us through some of the information and discussion on the points where we left off last week with the solid waste?
Sure. It has occurred to me that there is a bit of education that we can do about these, the necessary increases for this current, this contract that is coming up. This is, it's been sort of an exciting time the last year in terms of solid waste in the city of Athens, in that we definitely heard from the, from our local residents last fall, excuse me, last spring, when the solid waste bidding process was underway. And now we are again hearing from our residents, and it's, I think it's wonderful when our residents engage and let us know what they think about things. It helps make me understand at least the sort of the, the thought processes that citizens are going through as they, as they consider some of the changes that city council is discussing for the city. And I really value that, and I appreciate that immensely. And here we are in a very different time with our COVID-19 pandemic, and some of the points that citizens are making to me resonate or hit home for me in a way that during a non-pandemic type situation, that they might, they might be very different. So I think we have a lot to talk about today. Just to sort of give an overview for those online, we did have a bidding process for a new refuse and recycling with an alternate of composting bidding process this spring. And we did receive two bids, and the city administration has recommended to city council the acceptance of the lowest and the best bid, which was put in by Athens Hocking Recycling Centers. Although it was the lowest bid, it still is an increase in the cost of the total contract, even just for the same services that we've already been providing, which is recycling and refuse collection curbside. As part of our, the task force examination of solid waste and curbside collection in the city of Athens, last fall, we examined what it would take to add composting service to the refuse and recycling services that are already part of the contract. I realize that we haven't been very clear with all of Athens about the reasons for our, the task force recommendation to add composting services. From some of the communications that I've received from citizens, I've discovered that it's not clear the environmental impact that having organic waste or food waste in our landfill trash has on, on, on the earth. That it is not simply a matter of not wanting to have the smell of, of, of organic waste in our landfill or in our, in our trash. It is not that we simply hope that someone else can take that and produce a nice soil amendment that they can use. That's certainly part of it. But the major impetus here is to keep the organic matter out of landfills. We know that perhaps estimates are up to 20% of the methane gases that are produced due to humans comes from landfills. And the reason why this happens is because the common landfill practice, as I think most are aware, is you take the solid waste and you try to pack it into an area, even an area that has a, a seal around it, you're still packing that waste in. And what is created is what's called an anaerobic environment. Anaerobic meaning the absence of oxygen. And in the absence of oxygen, the biodegradation of food waste, a certain type of bacteria, microbes are attracted and grow in an area without oxygen, and those microbes produce the methane gas. So when we, when we pack in organic waste into our landfills, there is the, there is creation of methane gas that is released into the atmosphere. Methane gas is much more dangerous as a greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide, up to, up to 30-some times over a century. And if you look at a shorter period, over a 20-year period, it's up to 70 times more, more powerful than carbon dioxide. So it's a significant greenhouse gas. And if you look at policies around the globe, many large cities, many entire countries for some time now have been looking at how to separate organic matter from their regular refuse. To many citizens, I've been communicating that this is a, this has some similarities to recycling, that 30-some years ago, the city of Athens started recycling because it was a, a product with value. It was a product that didn't have to be put in the landfill because it could be part of a circular economy. It still had value. We could, we could collect the recycling and keep it out of the landfill, and at the same time, you know, get the value out of that recycling. And we have a nonprofit, the Athens Hocking Recycling Centers remains a nonprofit organization, and part of their costs and their, their revenues is selling that recycling that they collect. So their entire contract takes into consideration what they are able to make by selling that recycling. And, and so that means that we as residents pay a lower, can pay a lower fee because their contract does not have to be as high. As I mentioned to one citizen this week, a similar thing could happen with composting, in that they collect our food waste, they go through the labor and the expense to process that food waste and create soil amendment. And if they are able to create enough of that soil amendment, it can be sold to farmers and, and create additional revenue, much like the recycling, that will lower their operational costs, and then those savings can be passed on to residents. Something else that many people are unaware of is that while creating soil amendment, and, and that being one way that we reduce methane gas emissions, because in the process of processing compost or processing food waste, I'm sure anybody who has a backyard system knows that you turn it over with your shovel or your pitchfork, and that brings oxygen into the pile, and then those methane-producing microbes are not, do not thrive in that environment. And the microbes that do feed on the food waste, the bacteria, don't produce methane. So the backyard composting system works quite well. If we can separate that food waste from our solid waste and have that process done at Athens Hocking Recycling Centers, then not only are they keeping that methane from being produced in a landfill, but they are able to return that nutrient-rich soil into a garden or onto a farm. But rural action has helped Athens Hocking Recycling also look into a process that's called biodigestion. That is where you can build a facility that actually allows the, the production of methane gases in a, in a captured environment. So that meth, so you, you do allow that food waste to be put into a tank, for example, in the absence of oxygen, and those microbes and those bacteria produce the methane, and that methane is captured, because methane gas is a viable fuel source. We see around the state of Ohio, a number of different companies that make these facilities, and you can take that food waste, you can create a gas that is then can be used to power the Athens Hocking Recycling Centers as a fuel source. So there are lots of different ways that we can ultimately keep methane gas from being produced in landfills, which is better for the environment, which will help with climate change. And I am, as a member of the Environment Sustainability Commission, as somebody who is, is concerned about the environment and climate change, and that the task force that I was on, we agreed that this was an initiative that we should propose to the, to the city. And so that is why compost collection was included as an alternate in the bidding process. And as we've noted last week, there is an expense, approximately $140,000 to have a composting, curbside composting collection for the city of Athens. That wouldn't be a fee, much like the recycling support fee that would be added to everyone's bill. Now, I've been asked many times, well, I don't compost, why should I pay that fee? I understand your point. It's the same as recycling, however. It is the best thing that we can do for the city, for our comprehensive plan and our priorities of the city, and, and that is why we recycle. And that is why I also propose that we have a composting service. Long story short, that does mean an additional increase. I think it was ultimately determined to be about $3.29 per account, so per residence, basically, for that service, whether you use it or not. And ultimately, we estimated it to be about $3, as we, as we looked at, at making the fees as straightforward as possible. Now, I realize this is an additional expense, and to get back to our current pandemic, it comes at a really inopportune time. And that, those are the strongest voices that I have heard from, from citizens, that this is not the time to be adding additional services. I hear those, and I would like to have council talk about that today. One thing I want to point out is that I have heard from, you know, roughly 25 to 30 citizens, about double of the citizens have contacted me about supporting the composting fee. But the citizens who are concerned about the economics, concerned about residents who may not be able to, be able to pay this extra fee, I think that's an important thing to consider. I think in the long range of the city of Athens, and our sustainability goals, and our, the things that we care about, and the things that we teach college students, I received such a great email today from a woman who, who made that point, that this is worth it, simply to teach the 15,000 to 20,000 students that are in our city every year, as they move on in life, they learn about things here, which they then take on and spread in their own communities. And she, she said that composting was something that we should be teaching them, that we should be teaching them about our landfills and about our environment and about, about protecting it. So I thought it was a great point, but I wanted to open it up for, for anybody on council, clearly, to, to share with me your thoughts. Member Smedley?
Thank you, Member Crowell, and I really appreciate you going into the science of it, and I think it's certainly valuable information. My, my hesitation to it, and I voiced this concern last time, had nothing to do with the, the science of it. I understand all of that, and I also understand as part of our long-term strategic plan, it had everything to do with the timing. And, you know, $3 and change is not a lot of money, but it certainly is for those who don't have the means. And, but I will say, I've received 10 emails directly to me or to others in council, and all have been in support of curbside composting. I haven't heard from anyone directly that have been concerned about the cost. The only concern that I've heard about the cost was from the two individuals who were active during the meeting last time, I believe it was last committee meeting. So, well, so that was my main concern, and if it, if it's not a concern with the wider citizenry of Athens, then, then this, we should move forward with, with moving, with, with supporting curbside composting, no doubt. You know, I participated in the pilot. When it transitioned away from the pilot to the other program, I did drop out because of the cost, and I'm now composting at home. I know not everyone has the option to compost at home. A lot of us do, but not everyone. And so, you know, this, I, I know it fits into what we, what we want, what we want to do as a city long term. My concern remains for anyone we're not hearing from, may not have the ability to, to watch our meetings and, and be as engaged as some in our city are. But I can, we can only do so much in terms of, of getting engagement. So I hope people continue to, to reach out. I agree with you 100% Sam, Member Crowell, about it's so important that our, that our members of our, of our city reach out, share their opinions and where they stand on things. But I will say, yeah, I did receive 10, 10 emails, all of which were in support of curbside composting. So wherever, whichever way we go with this, you know, rates will increase regardless. Right? It's just about a matter of how much. And, and all, all the ones who reached out to me, if I had to summarize, regardless of, of which option we go with, with the rate increase, they'd like to see curbside composting part of that. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Member Fall here in just a second, but I want to reply to a couple of things that Member Smedley brought up. I did read here from a number of citizens who do their own backyard composting, and they brought up a very good point of if I'm doing this, and I'm doing the right thing for the environment in my backyard, why should I also pay for that service? And I understand that. The reason why is because it is really not affordable if every, every account in the city of Athens doesn't chip in. Recycling would never have grown to where it has today in the city of Athens if, if it was an opt-in service. The way to, to get the, the composting participation and to get real behavior change that will have an environmental impact is to, is to make it blanket across, across the city. And those perhaps who don't compost today may compost tomorrow or next year, et cetera. I, I plan on continuing to do my backyard composting, but I've also discovered, especially in the last year or so, that we are, have an abundance of soil amendment. I have a stamp-sized backyard, and my gardens are small, and, and I can't use all of the amendment that I have. So I plan on doing both. I plan on doing it in my backyard, so I don't have to pay for, for potting soil or extra soil, but then also when I have too much to use the city services. And then my final point to, to address, Member Smedley, is that she's right, that the increases to our fees are coming because we have to pay for the contract. It's not recommended that we subsidize all of our services in the city with general fund money from elsewhere. These are proprietary accounts, and so we need to pay for our services from the fees that we charge for those services. Having said that, something we should also discuss tonight is the, we have a bit of a balance in our garbage fund, and we could put off some of these increases or the increases in total until perhaps January, in order to help some of the people who are struggling right now. But these fees will have to come, and whether we decide to do composting as part of this service, I believe composting has to come too. If it doesn't come now, I believe it must come soon. Member Fall?
Great, thank you. And I think a lot of what Member Crowell has brought up about the environmental issues are very right on. I'd like to remember, to remind people, we're under a emergency, a climate emergency. That's something we're going to have to deal with after COVID emergency, like never-dull moment in this life. So, you know, there's the composting, that is a somewhat separate discussion and choice because we can put it off for a year because it's an add-on. And I, I think that, that's something that, because of the economics right now, that we should definitely look at. However, I was somewhat disappointed in some people saying, well, they don't do X, they don't, they don't need to compost, or they don't throw as much garbage away. But we have to look at it also as a public good. It's good to have our streets and our yards and those sort of public and private spaces clean. That's something that we need to think about in the future, too. You know, we need, I don't use the compost, I would not use the composting because I compost at home. But that is a public good. I'm the public. I'm going to help support that public good. Just like I don't use as much water as some people, I pay that minimum amount because that's what it takes for the city to have service. I'm willing to do that. And so that's one thing about the composting argument the people are bringing forward. One other thing I think that we need to really seriously think about in future is in the past, when we have brought forward increases in various services, such as water rates, we have kind of stepped them over a couple years. And I think that the past couple times we've had this happen, we haven't increased it, like, people say, well, it increases every year, but that's because we're stepping the increase instead of 4%, it's 1%, 1%, 2%. And so that helps people with their, their budgets, be able to budget in the future. And so that may be something, I don't know if we can do it here, but that might be a good thing going forward to continue doing in, in the future. So, thank you.
Member Claude Felder?
Thank you, Member Crowell. I truly understand that this is a difficult time for people, that in some ways, it's just the worst possible timing to have this contract end on June 30. But our current trash and recycling contract does end on June 30, so we have to decide what comes next. I also hope that we can find a way to step in the cost of the trash and recycling fees. I think it would be wonderful if the city could do that. I don't know much how, how much financial leeway we're going to have, but if that is possible to do, I would be completely in favor of trying to not have all the increase happen in July, which will likely still be a very difficult time for many people. However, I think it's worth noting that there is strong support for the expansion of the curbside composting program for this year. I mean, we have lots of things to consider, but this, I think this opinion is also valid to hear. I got 17 emails from people in support of the, expanding the curbside composting program. I had three or four other people tell me in person. I saw two friends say something about it on Facebook. And one thing that certainly not everybody said, but a number of the people who wrote pointed out that they had been participating in the composting program here in Athens since it involved taking your bucket to the farmer's market, since it first started with the, the pilot program that worked like that. And I was one of those people too, I will say. I've participated the whole time, which is part of why I, I like the program so much. But people, one gentleman wrote, he had participated since he took his bucket to the farmer's market. He participated in the free pilot. He, it wasn't, I, I don't know if it was easy for him or not, but he said he, he decided to keep participating now that it's $20 a month, and he really doesn't want to put his food in the trash anymore. Like, that's just not an option for him, and he doesn't have a way to compost at home. So I think that there are a lot of people who have put their faith in the community and shipped in, and, and about 100 who have even paid $20 a month for this service, who were really hoping that the community would believe in them too, and would expand this to everyone and lower those prices so it's not so painful for a lot of those people to participate. And so hopefully, you know, many, many more people would be able to participate. And I think the point that has been made is a really good one, that when curbside recycling started, not only in Athens, but in many communities, I witnessed this where I was living at the time, people were not always happy that they were going to have to pay for that service because they had never recycled, they didn't really understand it, they didn't know why it was beneficial, and they thought it was a strange add-on. And now, just about all of us compost. It's become normal, and it's become, I would say, an expected service for our community to provide to its residents. And I feel like we're at a similar early, maybe infancy phase, if you will, of curbside composting. There aren't that many communities in the United States that have done it yet. We could be among, you know, the progressive leaders of this nation, if we, in fact, we continue to do this. But it seems like the kind of feedback we're getting from people, several of whom are participants in the program, is so positive that it really suggests that the people who are already participating really like the program. And I know that rural action, when they were helping the city, I don't know the exact date, but maybe a year ago or so, they did a survey of all the participants in the program, and the feedback was extremely positive. People liked the program, they liked participating, they wanted to keep participating. And they said that, at that point, the program was free, but as I recall, a large majority of the participants said they were willing to pay a fee to continue. They hoped it would be $5 or less a month. So I think it's great that the committee that Member Crowell chaired has figured out a way to get the price down to $3.29 a month. And I guess my, my hope, and I'm willing to consider lots of different options on this, I know this is a terrible time and a complicated situation, and we have to think about everybody, but I do think these voices are important as well. I guess, I think it would be wonderful if we could find a way to step in the cost of the trash and recycling increases, to cut that, I don't know if we could possibly cut that increase in half or so at the beginning, but also have the curbside composting program. There are a lot of people in the community who would really like it to continue without a, without a gap from the pilot program to the expansion program, starting hopefully in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Katsas?
Yes, Member Crowell, thank you. And, you know, and I think it's probably because I am just so much more closer to the people that work in the service industry, and I, you know, I think about, in my business, so all of my employees are currently laid off. When I went through and filled out the paperwork for them, some of them have worked for me close to 20 years, so I, you know, we, I cannot stress that this is, this is not a good time for these people that are currently on the front line working for us and, and out there every day. I think that we should have some respect and try to, you know, I think that we should have some respect and try to, you know, try to work with them. I get composting. I understand it. I do believe that it's something that we need. I don't think it's something that we need right now. You know, my day consists of listening to the governor and trying to pick up information, collecting my own data from my business, and trying to understand what my next step is going to be and how my business is going to change and what I have to do to salvage the year. A lot of businesses currently right now are looking towards that September date of whether the students are coming back or not. And so there are a lot of big question marks that, you know, we're getting unanswered as they, you know, as they come up. But what I see right now is that everybody is being as conservative as they can be so that they can preserve whatever, you know, whatever business they have, you know, for the long term. So, you know, I would say it's like a dormant fee, a hibernation almost, and I would say at this point, you know, I am not in favor of seeing an additional burden applied to, you know, all of our citizens, you know, only if all of our citizens were doing well. And I just don't feel like that's the case right now, so I just have to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Crowell. So this contract that we're looking at with AHRC is a three-year contract, correct?
Correct.
Is it possible to modify the contract to include composting starting one year from now, so July 2021, rather than starting it now? I think, like, I would love to see it happening right now. And I would say that I've heard from a balance about equal numbers in favor of adding the composting and members of the community who are concerned about the additional cost. So that, I'm really torn. I would really like to just roll everything out, start out with the new contract and jump into this, but could we perhaps allow people who are willing to pay? Like, I'm one of those people who's paying the $20 a month to be composting right now, to be a part of the program. Could people who are willing and able to do that, continue to do that, and then we offer it citywide next year? That seems like a middle ground, maybe.
I can address some of those questions. Because the composting service was an alternate to the bid, I believe that, yes, we could not implement that service at this time, and I believe it could be added in one year's time. It could be added in the second year of the contract. I'm not 100% sure about that, but I believe that would be the case. And then in terms of continuing, I think that would be a question for AHRC. I think right now they are able to provide that service at that rate, but I've not spoken with them about being able to continue that. I would assume that, you know, when they went to that rate, they did that based on the number of participants. So if the number of participants continued to be the same, that they could continue doing that, but we'd have to check with them. President Isley?
Just to offer comments on both sides of this, we have received some public comments from Lori McKnight and then another person who said they've talked to 20 people who already compost, who aren't necessarily thinking that they would want this new recycling fee. So maybe the compromise or the option, you know, since it is an alternative that Council Member Grace presents, is an option to consider. There's also concern whether or not the public is aware of these potential rate increases that are going on, that the article, the information should be published in the newspaper. And we can certainly make an attempt to notify the newspapers so that there is coverage of this topic that we're talking about, but that we do, you know, we do publish with the press every week before, on the Friday before our meeting, that the meeting is going to be held, what the topics are going to be, and allowing people to make the comments. So we'll continue to do our efforts on outreach, too, so that people are aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Isley. And I'll just add that I now see some of the comments. I agree that education should be done on this issue. I think that we can explain, there have been a number of comments that the compost service is just an extra thing that people want, or it's unneeded. It's not something that the community needs, and I think that some of the environmental explanation for why composting is a good thing should be explained. And then also, we can get out into the community more information about this. As I said at the beginning, I love the participation. I love when community members are vocal about their thoughts. I wish the entire city was constantly engaged. We know that's not the case, so we can encourage, I would encourage everyone to please have their neighbors engage. And to follow up on President Isley's, we can do some engagement, too. If we decide, for example, to put off the composting program, we can do some education. We can make sure that people know that this is being debated, and then maybe more people will share their opinion. Yes, Member Fall?
Thank you. Last year, when we talked about this discussion and topic, I remember having people email me and text me from the pigskin because so many people were concerned about this issue that they went to the pigskin to watch the video of us making the decisions. So I think that we need to remember back on that, too, so that maybe in the future we do do education. I think that there's a lot of people very supportive about composting, but we are in a super sucky time, and so we go forward with the knowledge that the people support us and that maybe more people will be able to join in the opt-in program for this year that will make it cheaper maybe for them, and that we can go forward educating people to why full city service, full citywide composting is essential for, like, our climate emergency, our desire that's specifically enumerated in the comprehensive plan about becoming a zero-waste city. And that's something that we need to step, and we need to also understand that this is an unusual time and that people are suffering. And so we need to balance those, but at the same time, having a clean environment and doing these things helps everybody and it helps our environment, which means some of the things that may happen may not happen in the future with climate change, which makes COVID-19 really look like cat's play. Thank you.
President Isley?
Yes, we're going to try something here. Alan Swank has been listening to the meeting from the beginning and has said that he would like to make a comment, and he'd like to go ahead and speak. So Scott Thompson, our director of the Government Channel, is aiding us with this meeting. And so it looks like Alan is signing in, and if we can get the video going.
I think the audio may be working.
And the audio working, that would be helpful. Then we can get him to... Oh, he's trying.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. It looks like we've got at least a voice for him.
Very good.
And so, Alan, if we're good, then you've got three minutes to speak to us and offer any comments and insights. Thank you.
Thank you, President Isley. Like you, I have a timer on my desk, so we'll pay attention to the three minutes. The interesting thing I've found from this conversation this evening is that this has become a composting ordinance, which it is not. This is a comprehensive trash recycling and possibly composting ordinance. And I think we need to focus on what's really going on here. We're in a very difficult time. Those who are currently employed in the public sector, in many cases, economically have not been affected by this. The vast majority of people of Ohio University are still receiving a check. The vast majority of people employed by the City of Athens and the County of Athens are still receiving a check. Yet it's the private sector people that Member Kotzis talks about who are wondering how they're going to pay their rent in May and June and beyond. One thing we need to remember here is, in this bid, Athens Hockey and Recycling Center works for us. We do not work for them. There are communities all over the state, there are government and entities all over the state, there are private entities all over the state who are engaged in the contract and the bidding process that have now put that process aside because of COVID-19. I've sent numerous emails to council members and gotten some wonderful responses, which I truly, truly appreciate. My suggestion, my recommendation, at least something I would hope council would think about, is going to the Athens Hockey and Recycling Center and asking them to extend the current contract for at least six months, if not a year. We have the power to do that. Again, they or whoever we hire works for us. We do not work for them. We do not need their permission. I was one of those people that went to the pigskin last year, as Council Member Fall talked, to support local jobs, and I think that is a commendable thing. At this point in time, this is not a conversation about composting. This is a conversation about a comprehensive trash and recycling and perhaps composting program. Little things like, do we go with standardized cans? We need to talk about that. We need to talk about the annual increase. Do we really need an annual increase? And talking folks at the farmer's market this past Saturday, they've not seen vegetable prices go up in 10 years. So I think it's erroneous to think that all years, every year, prices necessarily go up. In terms of publishing this to the public, unfortunately, if we're publishing on Friday, those who read the A News don't get it by Monday because there's no longer a Monday Athens News. They're going to miss the meeting. I would wager that at least 80% of the Athens city population, those who will be affected by this possible new program, have no idea what's going on. You can see that by looking at the Near East Side and the Far East Side Facebook pages. So in conclusion, I would, if you give me 10 seconds...
I will.
...respectfully request that council put this aside for a while so that we can engage the public a bit more and look at options to all of these programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swank. I had fully intended to also bring up the container debate. I thought that, you know, I certainly received a lot more communications from city residents about the composting program, which was why I started that conversation. But the other thing that we needed to discuss was having a standardized can, a container for all city residents. We have a one-container rate, yet citizens buy their own containers, and so some citizens have purchased a larger container than others. So we've discussed before that it would be very good and equitable for the city to have a single container, and I support that, too, although that also comes with an additional cost. And so, especially at this time, as we look at ways to save the burden on the individual residents, moving to the one承容器system, while I agree, it is a better solution. At this time, we are trying to pull out all things that weren't absolutely necessary. And I don't know if Auditor Heck or maybe Mayor Patterson, I believe, can respond to your point about the contract. I know that last year, we were able to extend the contract for one additional year, but there's nothing in the contract that allows us to say we're going to extend it again for another year based on the old pricing. They submitted a bid. I think the state of Ohio says you submit a bid, and then the lowest bid is accepted, and then that bid is the legal cost of services. I don't know if the mayor wants to reply to that. Sure, you're correct in that the previous contract with AHRC, with our hauler, did have language in there to where there could be up to three one-year extensions, but there's nothing beyond that under the previous contract, to go beyond. Member Claude Felder?
And Mayor Patterson, please correct me if I'm wrong, but hasn't the current contract with the Athens Hockey and Recycling Center already been extended for at least one year and maybe for two?
Well, no. Well, that contract ends...
But I mean, from the time that it began, I think, did it not begin further than three years ago?
Oh, it did. I can't remember, Council Member Claude Felder, what the term was for the regular contract. I don't remember.
So it might be interesting to find out if, in fact, there would still be any time left to extend it. I don't know if there is or not.
Not with the previous contract. Again, there was a three-year, three one-year extensions that we were, that was in the language, and we're in the end of that third extension.
Ah, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Yeah. Member Smedley?
I just wanted to share a comment from Mr. Alan Swank, and Mr. Swank, thanks again for chiming in, as well as everyone else sharing your comments. He says COVID-19 allows us to set this aside, and I assume he's referring to the restriction on our ability to extend the contracts. And so I wanted to follow up on that to see if you all are aware of anything related to that. Thank you.
I don't know that we have a way of answering that tonight without checking further. So thanks for the comments, and we can check. Yep.
And I'm sorry, I was reading comments on my side, Member Smedley, and I wasn't paying 100% attention to your comments. Were you bringing up this point that Mr. Swank is making?
Yes, I was asking if anyone was already familiar, if anyone was familiar at this time, if we had any flexibility as a municipality to set aside that rule, given the situation that we're in right now, that would allow us to still extend the contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. I wasn't 100% with you. Yes, Member Grace?
I just wanted to comment that even if we could somehow get an extension of our current contract or somehow extend and not accept the new contract, there were price increases with the extensions. We didn't pay for the years that were added on to the original contract. The cost went up. So if we asked for an extension, that doesn't automatically mean we would pay the old price. I would assume that AHRC might say, well, okay, we could extend your old contract, but it costs this increased price amount because they have to cover the salaries and benefits for their workers. And while, I mean, I've been thinking a lot about a year ago when all the people were either in council chambers. It's a strange thing to think about, crowded council chambers, lots of people. But we did. We had a crowd, and then overflow was watching the pigskin, and the big concern for those individuals was that we keep this service with a local, responsible, sustainable employer who provides good, local, well-paying jobs with benefits. And so as we consider whether, whatever happens with the contract, it is supporting our local economy. It is providing good, well-paying jobs, and I don't know if jobs would be lost. know if, if jobs would be lost if the composting program is, is not expanded or continued. I don't know how that would work for AHRC, whether they can, can maintain that facility just sort of on hold for a year. But it, it is, the, the service that, that all of us as residents of Athens share the cost of, does provide jobs. And so, it's, there, there's that side of it also. Thank you.
Member Reisner, did you want to speak? Go ahead, please.
Yes. Getting back to the, to the, to the topic that the agenda item is, is rates. The biggest concern that I have at the moment is whether or not the city will have the funds over the next three years to pay for the increase, whether or not we do curbside composting or not. We, we still haven't seen any data yet to, to make a judgment on that. All we have is the information that was given before the, the pandemic hit. We don't know what the projections will be for city income at the end of this year, the year after that, or the year after that. We, we just don't know. So, that being the situation, my advice, if I have any to give, is to proceed very cautiously about increasing rates at this time. We were, well, we have to think about what impact this is going to have on our, on our citizens. And that's about all I have to say about it, really. We're in the dark.
Member Reisner, if I could follow up, I, I agree with you. There are many, many unknowns. But if the, if the rates are not increased, and the contract still has to be paid, and that has to come out of the city fund, so the city would have to subsidize the contract. And, and the city also has unknowns in terms of revenue streams, et cetera. So.
You're exactly right. Yep.
Right. Okay, just checking on that.
Just one thing that, to go back a year ago. Member Grace is correct when she mentions the fact that even though we extended the contract, we still had to increase the amount of money that we paid to Athens Hockey. That depleted the reserve that we had in our garbage fund. It used to be very flush. It, it was a really nice pot of money that we had there. That's how we got the recycling bins, and that's how we got curbside recycling and other things going. We could subsidize because we had those funds. Those funds were depleted when we extended the contract. We had to make up for that. And that's where that money came from. Now we're down to about $100,000. So, we're going to have to come up somewhere with, with those additional funds. I think there's $100,000 left. That'll carry us a little ways. But it won't carry us for three years. The end.
Member Klaudfelder?
Just to follow up on what Member Reisner pointed out, I think he's absolutely right. And it, you know, it's just probably good to be clear on all this. The city may have somewhat an ability to subsidize the program for a little while. As Member Reisner said, there's about $100,000 there. That would go really fast. And I think people just need to realize that the city's ability to subsidize the program is pretty limited. After not very long, subsidizing the program would equate to, you know, potential layoffs at the city. I mean, it's, money's getting really tight for cities all over the United States in COVID-19, and we're going to be facing a tight economic time. So, I do hope that there's a way that the city can step in the increases by, through subsidy. But people do need to realize, as, as Member Reisner said, there's no way the city could do that for three years. And, and I look forward to hearing exactly, for exactly how long it might be possible, but my guess is the period of time would not be close to that.
Member Grace?
I, I just wanted to ask if, if we could hear some of the discussion that has happened, possibly either from the mayor or from our auditor, exactly what options do we have to be able to pay our bills and step in the fee increases? What, what is possible from the perspective of, of the, the bill payer for our city here?
I, I'll jump in. I, I'm not sure what to say. I didn't provide council with financial information for these rates to move forward. I did get that information about the middle of last week. So, I can't really say what everything, and, you know, it's already been started through council. So, I, I can't really say what the basis was for all of the projections. I don't, I don't know what else to say. I felt by the time I got it, it was too late for me to jump in and start, you know, reviewing someone else's financial comments. And so, I, I really don't know what to say to that. I, I think Jeff knows, is exactly right when he comments on the fact that we used to have a much healthier carryover balance. And, you know, that's fine. It has helped us do a lot of things. But I, I will admit that I was opposed to continually raising rates when we had that large carryover. But the more recent contracts have eaten up that carryover. There's only so many revenue sources for the garbage fund. It is self-sustaining, and basically, the rates are it. And so, you have to look at it that way. I, you know, I, I don't, as a citizen, I can comment on the composting, but that's something you, you're going to have to look at and consider. You know, I don't know exactly what the rates are, what the percentages are, what we can do to get around it. Everybody's had a lot of comments, and I just think putting the information out there. We have to have our garbage picked up, and it's, and we have to pay a fair price for it. And so, I, I don't really have a lot to say as far as, you know, what, what projections for increased revenue you're looking at. As I said, I, I didn't prepare that. And so, I, I don't know if, I would assume that it's, it's okay, but I can't, I can't say. I don't know. Maybe, maybe the mayors had more discussions outside of council with people who did work on this. I, I just, I don't know what to say.
Well, let me, let me mention something, Councilmember Grace, because you kind of alluded to the rest of the city budget, and how do we make this work? Well, keep in mind, this is a proprietary fund line. So this is the funding for our garbage recycling. It comes through billing, much like our water, much like our sewer system. And so, to that end, this is to kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Reisner was just mentioning in terms of the garbage fund slowly lowering across time, because we were subsidizing from our reserves that were there. And that is that, you know, this new contract is for $1,682,692, of which council, with this budget, this year's budget, already authorized appropriation of 1.6 million. So, so to Auditor Heck's point and to Councilmember Reisner, your question and concern, the reserves that are there, we also need to increase that appropriation to cover this particular expense from the garbage fund with AHRC's increase. It's not, it's, it's bad practice to dig into the general fund to subsidize a enterprise fund or a proprietary fund line, much like we wouldn't do it with the parking garage. That revenue comes from parking garage funding, that, that the monies that come in, revenue related to the meters. So, with respect to, and I don't want to deviate at all from this particular topic, which is this particular contract, the city is doing a lot, I'm doing a lot with my, all my departments, to where they have been instructed to come up with significant budget reductions this year, as we look to what the revenue will look like, especially into the general fund. We are working through that process as we speak. We've already made a lot of changes to where there is, other than emergencies, i.e. a water line break in the middle of the night, or sewer break, or something like that, overtime, that there is no overtime being authorized. It's all being viewed by Chief Pyle, who all of you know now is the acting service safety director. We are also looking at all upcoming retirements or positions that aren't filled. So we're doing everything that we need to, to be very prudent with the monies coming in. But again, this is, we're talking about a proprietary fund line. Six, or 760 is proprietary. garbage.
Can I just add a comment on to that? The mayor is correct. Legally, we can subsidize proprietary funds from the general fund with our general obligation monies, which are tax dollars. However, aside being bad practice, we don't have that money in the general fund right now. We do not have it. That's a large fund already, with a large payroll, and we do not have any money to subsidize. We've really never made that a practice, and I would hate to start that.
It's kind of a moot point.
Yeah, yeah.
President Nisley?
I have a friendly suggestion. I've appreciated all the comments that we've received from the several public members, and they have come up on our Zoom webinar chat. And I think we've heard from all council members, and the mayor, and the auditor. With that given, and I know that we have some more work to do, we have heard the first reading of the ordinance last week, and so we'll be returning to a second reading. We've had some very good suggestions from council members to, or, excuse me, from public members to do a little more outreach, to reach out to the newspapers, perhaps the radio, social media, and we can be, we can be working on that as well from our city end. But I'd say, in the light of several other heavy, since we spent over an hour on this now, and we had, we're just on item one on our agenda for the committee meetings, that we might consider moving on to some other topics, if that's possible. Thank you. It's a suggestion.
So I would say, last call for council members to chime in if you have anything additional to say. I think we've heard from, from all council members and a fair amount of citizen input. Member Kotzis?
Actually, I remember Grace had her hand up first.
You're so kind, Member Grace. Sorry I missed you down there.
That's okay. I don't think my connection is very good. I've been jumping in and out. But thank you, Member Kotzis. It was, just touched on very, very briefly, that the conversation about the, the garbage containers. And, Member Crowell, do you have the, either per unit or total cost for that? Because I, that's another piece of the conversation that's been kind of coming and going. And as far as whether we move ahead with universal containers or postpone that, but I would like to just have it clear what that cost is.
You know, Member Grace, I can't find it right now, and maybe President Nisley can, but I believe the cost was about $100,000.
I think it's $138,000, $138,000 is what it was, I think, from the presentation.
Okay, $138,000 for that cost. However, in a discussion I was having with the executive director of Athens Hockey Recycling Centers, he mentioned a, a possible annual fee for those containers, which I don't believe was in the original numbers that we looked at. So I haven't had a chance to confirm what Mr. Underwood was speaking of there. We certainly would want to look at any annual fee outside of an initial capital cost for those containers.
And I stand corrected, Councilmember Crowell. I was quoting the fee for the composting.
Composting, yeah.
Yeah. So it may be, well be below that, and I'm not.
I think it was about $100,000, Member Grace.
Okay.
Uh, Member, everybody keeps moving around. I see you now.
Yes, thank you, Member Crowell. You know, and I would, and it's not to go down the rabbit hole, but this is just something that I'm, I'm thinking about, and I'll say it real quick. I wonder where we are with our Big Belly contract. I would believe that we're probably coming up on the 50th anniversary of that, that, you know, and those were, those were $50,000. Do we believe that, do we want to pad the, the garbage fund and get composting instead? I mean, it, it's kind of one of those things that I think about. If you're looking at your expenses, can you, can you look to something else if you feel like you can, you can gain something better, and, you know, you can't have it all?
Thank you, Member Kotzis. I believe Mr. Swank has the same presentation that I have, and he has been able to find in the presentation, the number that I was remembering of $100,000 was the, the fee per year. It's a $2 per, I believe, $2 per month per cart fee, at over 4,000 carts. That's about $98,000 a year. It's a, excuse me, a $25,000 upfront capital costs for the delivery, assembly, and distribution of those containers. Thank you, Mr. Swank. Uh, let's see. Are we on Member Klaudfelder?
I would just like to briefly say that, to me, it seems like now is not the best time to, to get the same containers for everybody, if that would be a monthly expense for a two-year period. I didn't even realize that. So, I, to me, it seems far more important to have a compost program than to have matching trash receptacles, personally. I know there would be some advantages to it, but I think we'd be helping the environment a great deal more by investing in the, the compost program.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with comments? Yes, Mayor Patterson?
Just a comment to what Member Kotzis was speaking to at the Big Belly. It's a five-year contract, and I believe that we're either at the end or close to the end of the third year of that five-year contract. So we still have a year or two left on that contract. I might add that the benefit of the Big Bellies is what we are diverting, which is all part of this conversation as well, because there is no, this is the first time we've ever had recycling on Court Street or in the Uptown area. So I deem it as being well worth the diversion. The diversion rate is, was running at about 36% to 39%. And I can get those numbers for you if you care to see what percentage has been diverted from the landfill.
Okay, the Big Bellies maybe is a conversation for a future meeting. I would like to discuss that project as well. But I think we are completed. If no other council members or city administration have further comments, President Nisley, I believe that closes this part of the agenda.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the Bailey's Trail system, and I'm going to turn this over to the mayor for a presentation. As I understand, we have an opportunity for a grant, which would carry with it, by accepting a grant, also some cost share that we would need to be looking at. So, Mayor Patterson. You'll need to unmute.
I do that all the time. Thank you, President Nisley. The, what I did want to bring up to council is that we got notification about a week and a half ago, ORCA. Orca received a notification, the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia. And it was that the, the Forest Service National Partnership Office knows how tough things are from a COVID-19 standpoint. And through two funding sources, they have a grant for $350,000 that they want to administer to Orca. It also comes with a match. The match, it's a 20% match. I've been in communication with the, with the commissioners on to this point. For the city's share of that, if we were to do a 50/50, would be about $45,000, somewhere between $35,000 and $45,000. The fund that I was looking at possibly coming from, it's important that council and the viewing audience to know about this fund. We've spoken about it many times, both while I was on city council and I've spoken about it as mayor, is the Athens Enhancement Fund. That fund basically started as a revolving loan fund of sorts. It has been used for a number of different projects. And some of those projects were outside the city in terms of economic development. Ed Maps, back in the day, was a recipient of some of the Athens Enhancement money. Athens Enhancement money basically comes, I'm going to lean on Auditor Heck a little bit here, if you don't mind, Kathy. It's, that's funding that came from a tax abatement program for the Athens Station down on Depot and Station Street when it was developed way back in the day. Mr. Bill Tremblay was the individual who was really working on that project. A lot of history, if anybody's interested. I'm sure I could dig up some history on that particular project. But regardless, the funding is not taxpayer dollars, City of Athens taxpayer dollars. That's important for people to know. The other thing with the funding that is in the Athens Enhancement is it cannot be used for salaries. It cannot be used for benefits. It can only be used for projects. With, with thinking this through, there's roughly $100,000 in that particular fund line that can be used for projects. The, our match for what would be an additional 10 miles of mountain bike trail for outdoor recreation in our region, which is what that $440,000 would create, that something like the Athens Enhancement would fit towards that continuance of trail development in the Bailey. The, I think that this, that's an appropriate fund line. And again, I have to stress, and I will stress this over and over again as we're talking this through, that again, this is a fund line that cannot be used for, for wages. It can't be used for benefits. It can't be used for anything like that, because I know how, how difficult things are right now. I really do. And so it's something that I really want city council to consider as we move forward. We don't have to work really quickly on this, because clearly there's probably going to be a lot of conversation and discussion about this, as there certainly is with other funders into making this happen. But I want council to be aware that I, with the award of this grant, or at least being told that there's $350,000 that can go towards the Bailey from the US Forest Service, their National Partnership Office, that this is something worth strongly considering.
And do we have comments? Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
From the Enhancement Fund, you mentioned there are some restrictions, obviously, but are there any geographical restrictions to it? Does the money have to be spent within the city limits, or can we go outside?
We can, we can, President has already been set to where it can be spent outside. I mentioned Ed Maps. Ed Maps was headquartered outside the city. Yeah, so, and in talking with the law director, the law director had been working with, with clerk of council to, to find out what has been done in the past, whether there were restrictions on our use of that money. And again, other than not being able to use it for, for salaries, wages, or benefits, there aren't any restrictions in terms of spending it outside the city.
Thank you.
We used it for transportation too, by the way. In 2013 and 2012, 2013, $90,000 came out to subsidize Athens Public Transit. And I am not 100% sure as to whether Bus Route 6 was already established. I think that Bus Route 6 did take place under the previous administration, which would have been in, maybe in that timeframe. But again, for Athens Public Transit, there was money used from Athens Enhancement for two years.
Councilmember Smedley, and then Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. Apologies if you said this and I missed it. Would we be foregoing any plans for what we intended to use that money for if we went, went with this? And the other, the other question was, what's the timeframe? What's our, when would that need to be committed? Thank you.
No, it doesn't impact anything else. As a matter of fact, one of the things that I would like to suggest along with this is since we're talking about trail building or trail maintenance, is that I wanted to also explore some of that Athens Enhancement revenue going to Camp Rotan. I've been in Camp Rotan many days now. That's where I go for my mental respite to go pull invasives out of the park. And the trails there need a lot of attention as well. And so I would actually be requesting a bundling where we, we ask for money to go towards the Bailey Trail System for a match, and also money to go into Sales Park. We need to do a lot of step repair. We also need to do a lot of, of bridge work. There are several bridges that certainly need some attention. I know Councilmember President Nisley, that you go up there often too, and I think you can attest to some of the condition of, of some of our trails up there. And we need to continue to be good stewards of land that was donated to us by the Athens Rotary.
Okay, Councilmember Smedley, and then Councilmember Klaubfelder.
Camp Rotan.
Camp Rotan, yes, that was the name.
You mean Camp Rotan? Not Sales Park, right?
What, did I say Sales Park?
You did. Yes. I'm confused. Don't mind me.
Councilmember Grace.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Nisley. How much money is currently in the Enhancement Fund?
I believe there's a little more than $100,000 in that particular fund. I don't know. Auditor Heck has. You're muted.
You're muted, Kathy.
No, is he here? Yeah, 116,900.
Thank you.
And then Councilmember Klaubfelder had a question? No? Okay, you were okay. Any other comments or questions? And, and so you said not urgent tonight, not urgent next week, but something we do need to be thinking about because the grant probably has a deadline for being able to provide the cost share.
Okay. I guess my, my question was timelines. Did we, did we get that answered?
I, let me come back to council.
Sure.
I can either come back sometime this week, but I'll, I can get you that timeline. That off the top of my head, I'm not 100% sure on.
Okay. All right, thank you. If no other questions or comments on that, then we'll move on to the general election. And Councilmember Fall has a suggestion for a resolution with our fall elections coming up.
Great, thank you. I wanted to, to put forward a single reading resolution about doing our November election, which is a somewhat important general election in our lifetime. And so I, I wanted to put a resolution forward that would go to not only local Board of Election people, but state and our senators, and up to the federal, to be able to make sure that the underpinnings of our democracy, which is safe, free, and fair elections, is at the utmost importance for people who are in Columbus especially, to make sure that they're planning for. Right now is the time to bring a resolution forward about this because it's, it's, I guess it's like a baby. It's like nine months out in front. And we need to make plans now so that we can bring it forward, safe and secure and happy. So I'm bringing a resolution, and Jeff Reisner has helped me with the writing. I did not want to, like, present a whole written resolution because time is just different in this time. So basically, what I see, three of the important areas that the state needs to identify and work with in enabling us to have free, fair, and safe elections is registration, making registration free, fair, and safe. Right now, you can reach, you can register online. However, if you are changing addresses through the DMV or the Bureau of Medical, of Motor Vehicles, that doesn't change over. They don't update your registration, voter registration right now, and you have to go and do that on your own. The state needs to change that. Make it easier to register for voting, because the vote is going to be so important. We need to make sure that, that what happened in Wisconsin with lines and people getting infected by a deadly disease, at least 40 people that they think now, from having to go and vote in person. That means that in order to not have that happen in Ohio, we have to expand the early voting and the mail voting. And so these are the three areas that Jeff and I have been working on, writing what we think needs to happen in order for our citizens in the city of Athens to have a free, fair, and safe election in November. So we'll be putting this together and putting it out during the week. I would like for people to put forward things that they're concerned about so that we can do research and put it in the resolution.
Questions, comments? Councilmember Klaubfelder.
I was trying to indicate nonverbally that I think this is an excellent idea, and I, I will be happy to give some thought to additional feedback. Thank you for, to Members Fall and Reisner for starting this initiative.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so I see this, the thumbs up, all right.
Thank you.
And without further ado, then what we'll do is move on to the Finance and Personnel Committee to review Stimson Avenue funding and an update on that. And Councilmember Crowell, as chair, will present.
Thank you, President Nisley. Yes, we will conclude tonight with a, another discussion of, of funding. And this specifically is for a project that we have been discussing, and the Director of Engineering and the city administration has been looking at for a number of years. And this is the Stimson Avenue project. Tonight, let me get on the right page here. We are discussing an ordinance for next week that would authorize the advertisement of the Stimson Project. We need to introduce legislation both to authorize and to appropriate funds. And this would be a schedule that would start with the first reading next Monday. We specifically need legislation for the loan that this project would require, the loan we would get through the State Infrastructure Bank. And they need 30 to 60 days to, for the committee to review for the loan closing. So the options we have for, for next week is passing the legislation for the loan next week, and also appropriation. Or next week, we could separate out the State Infrastructure Bank loan and, and pass it alone as an emergency next week in order to get it in front of the committee in time for, for that loan to be achieved or to be granted. Now, just to point out, some of the language that would be in the legislation really comes down to the importance of Stimson Avenue for, for the city of Athens. This is a chance to reconstruct, rebuild a street for the first time in 50 years. The street carries over 7,000 cars per day. And not only is the roadway at the end of its useful life, but the underground utilities, the infrastructure, needs to be upgraded. We also know that the, anyone who's gone through the Stimson Avenue and East State Street intersection, that is a very complicated intersection, and it has experiences numerous vehicle crashes, also vehicles with pedestrians. Another priority for this project is the overhead electric and telecommunications lines, and where those current poles are, really limit accessibility for pedestrians, also limit fire department access, and really are a safety concern for travelers. So part of this project would be to have these underground utilities placed underground. We know that this project is really about a, a complete improvement in the development of the street. Not only would the roadway itself have a full-depth reconstruction, but it would become a complete street in terms of pedestrian facility upgrades, lighting improvements, landscaping, the aforementioned water and sewer upgrades, all the way from Stimson Avenue, excuse me, all the way from East State Street to the roundabout to North 1804 Way. Now, really important for this discussion is that we have been, the city of Athens has been awarded an Ohio Small Cities Grant in the amount of $2,126,815, which must be awarded to a contractor by June 10th of this year to guarantee award of the grant funds. So basically, in order for us to receive that $2.1 million from the, from the state of Ohio, we have to settle this legislation in time for the June 10th receipt of those funds, or official awardee, awarding of those funds. Now, for our discussion, we are expected to receive additional monies for this project, including an Ohio Public Work Grant in the amount of $400,000, and also a 0% loan in the amount of $400,000. And this, this does, is pending passage of the state of Ohio Capital Spending Bill. So the amount that the city administration is recommending that we borrow for this project does not include those amounts, because they are not guaranteed. But if we do receive that, those two $400,000 monies, as well as an additional $500,000 in the safety funds from the Ohio Department of Transportation, then those will, those will, of course, decrease the amounts of money that are, are necessary to pay for this project. So we would like next week to authorize the Service Safety Director to accept bids and enter into a contract. accept bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction for this project, number 315. So that is what we have to discuss today. I know, I believe that Director Hetty is online with us here. And so if council has any very detailed questions, he may be able to answer those better than I. President Isley has been very helpful on this as well, and she might be able to answer some questions or give us additional information. But questions from council members?
One question.
Yes, Member Reisner.
How many ordinances are we going to introduce Monday? Will it be one or two?
It's two, yeah. Two ordinances on, on Monday.
One is authorization and the other is for financing, correct?
That is correct. And I believe that the financing will have to be an emergency measure to pass on, to suspend the rules. President Isley, did I have that correct?
What the one will be, is primarily authorizing the city to apply for a loan. And council member, or excuse me, Public Works Director Robert Hetty has submitted some spreadsheets for us to review and has reviewed those in part at the mayor auditor meetings this past week and has issued a revised one. And that first ordinance, that loan applicant, authorizing the loan application would allow us to borrow five, approximately $5 million. It's zero interest rate for the first year. It is zero payments for 30 months. And so that's the first piece of legislation. And a 3% interest rate, the second piece of legislation would be, and that one would likely, we would have it up and have it for a suspending. I believe Director Hetty is working with the state of Ohio to find out. He thinks that signature of that, once it passes, would be fine without the emergency clause on it. The second piece of legislation would be the appropriation ordinance. And that would also begin next week as well.
And so on that note, the total project is a 7.8 project. As noted, we would apply for the loan amount in $5,010,000. We would have the 2.1 approximately Ohio Small Cities Grant. And then we would have monies also coming from, from local funds. And then there are, is about 1.3 million in the additional safety grant and ODOT grant, as well as the loan that comes to 1.3 million. So that's what we are considering today. Yes, Member Claude Felder?
Thank you for sharing all those numbers. That was just a wee bit fast for me. Could you clarify what the city's financial commitment would be to this project, please?
I, I think I have some notes from the, from a conversation. It's a $5 million loan, 2.1 for the Small Cities Grant that's confirmed. And then the 600,000 remaining each year would be coming from our local funds. And that would be a combination of accounts number 220, which is Street Fund, 225, the State Highway Tax Fund, 226, the Real Tax Fund, and account 572, the Street Rehab Fund. Councilmember Crowell, I think Mayor Patterson.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Mayor.
I should also add, and I think maybe Director Hetty can speak to this as well, that we do plan to apply for, once again, the Transportation Improvement District funding, which is a 25% match up to $250,000. This project would certainly qualify for the full 250 ask. But it would be with the Stimson Avenue project, which I believe Jessica Dine and Director Hetty have put, started pulling things together. That meeting is, is later this week.
President Isley?
And so then of that 5 million that we're, will be authorizing the loan application, if additional funds come in, then such as that, that fund, that grant, that Transportation Improvement District grant, then we would be able to reduce the amount of the loan by any additional grants that we, that we receive. Do we, want to see if Mr. Hetty, since he's been waiting an hour and a half, very patient?
Yeah, Bob, if you're still there, we'd love to hear from you if you'd like to.
Just jump in.
Yes, President Isley and Councilperson Crowell, you're correct on that last statement about borrowing. So if we borrow the 5 million, the only reason we're having to borrow the full, that 5 million is because of the pending High Public Works Grant and loan and all of that TED fund. So if we're successful and, and the safety funds for the intersection, the 500,000 for safety, if we'd be successful with 800,000 from OPWC, 500,000 in the safety grant, and then 250,000 from the Transportation Improvement District, we'd actually only need to borrow 3,460,000. So that 5 million may sound like a large number, but we're, we're pretty confident in the OPWC and the safety funds. The TED is competitive within the state, so that one's not as, not as a sure bet. But we, our loan amount may be 3.4 or 3.7 million instead of that 5 million. Yeah, this project is, basically, if you think about it, we haven't touched Stimson Avenue since the river was rerouted. And we've, we've definitely got our monies worth out of that, that investment. But that street that was built during an automobile centric time and doesn't really meet our needs now. And it kind of doesn't help that area to, to what it could be in the future. So we've looked at a project to try to incorporate, you know, road diets to narrow the streets, make it safer, make wide pathways so that at least one side will be eight, eight plus feet in places for, to connect down to the Hawk Hocking Bike Way and well, to connect uptown. LED lighting. And then to move, you know, one of the major costs over about 1.4 million to move all the utilities underground, that's something we've gone back and forth on. But you know, this is a once in a 50 year opportunity to do that. I think in 2003, maybe the city regrets not doing that on East State Street. We got too far down the path and didn't, didn't make it happen. So we've been progressing to get that done. We're working with AEP and we've got a price and got a plan to do that. But it does add some cost there. So the, one thing, well, hopefully when this project's done, we'll have new water lines upsized from six inch to 12 inch, new storm sewer from up to 12 to 24 inch, a new sanitary line from a five inch clay tile to a eight inch plastic pipe, and as well as a duck bank for all the telecom utilities. So it's a very comprehensive project. Really change the looks of the street and the, and the use and should make it a safer street as well. So with that, I'll, if any other questions about, we've taken the last two weeks and really dove into the next five years of capital improvements in streets. And I've shared the spreadsheet that the President Isley talked about. Basically, we went out and looked and could we deliver our capital projects even with a 15% reduction in, in revenue. And right now, the, the funds that we're looking at, actually not 220, that's our standard street funds. We can maintain it with, with reductions of capital spending. This year we're reducing over 300,000 just in, in not spending capital on buildings and equipment. But we can fund this project, the anticipated West Union project, the uptown projects that we have over a million dollars for. And then even if we look at a $2 million Small Cities out in 20, fiscal year 2024, with a 20 year loan term and being able to delay payments on this CIB loan out 30, month 31, we can fund, clear out, you know, to 2024, even with a 10% reduction. So we can fund a 15% reduction through 2023. And then if revenues don't return, then we'd have to move some funds around. So we've taken a very comprehensive look at whether we can fund this or not and maintain our typical $500,000, our year annual paving.
And as President Isley, Member Reisner, do you want to say something?
I just had one, one thought. This is only because I got an email from a telecom vendor concerning the MicroCells and G5 rollouts. With the, with the new project and the fact that the utilities are going to be buried and poles are going to be moved around, has any thought been put in the plans about where to locate MicroCells down Stimson?
Councilperson Reisner, we haven't, we've had one application back probably a year ago, I think about the time we started to hear about small cells or the 5G. That was on the, in the west end of Stimson. We haven't seen anything since, or I haven't. But what we could do is in our design standards for, for small cell wireless or cellular, they would have to co-locate on our new traffic light poles.
No, that's good. Good.
So that would be, there'd be an opportunity, those poles are spaced, I'm going to say every 50 feet or so, or more than that. They're staggered side to side. We went to a little different light fixture than what we're used to to save on poles just because the, right away down there's only 55 feet. And that's, as you, you all may know, that's why we've got utility poles in the sidewalks now. So we looked at a design where we could stagger those poles from one side of the street to the other. But yeah, they, they could co-locate and actually that's preferred in, in certain regions in the city. I don't remember if we listed Stimson as a specific corridor. The good thing, Councilperson Reisner, is that we will have fiber now. Frontier only has copper in the street. Horizon and Charter have fiber and we'll also have a city fiber. So there would maybe an opportunity in the future. It'd allow us to link the pool and the wastewater treatment plant to get it up even closer to, to City Hall as well when we do this project. So having the fiber there should facilitate 5G.
Right, right. Thank you.
If Committee Member Smedley has no comments, we can open it up to the rest of council. Member Fall, did you have a question? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I would just like to make note that this is a, another complete street that we are planning. And that has been a policy for a number of years. I would like to see actually the nomenclature and the wording of that policy be turned into actual ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Fall. Other council members? Mayor, Auditor, any other city administration comments? Member Claude Felder?
I guess if I may do so, I would just like to ask, or just like to thank city engineer Robert Hetty for all of his comprehensive planning and, and his detailed look at things, not only for this project, but for everything in the next five years. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. Mayor?
I'll be brief. And I think that, that Director Hetty has already explained this to everybody, but we were the number two ranked project, Stimson Avenue, on the OPWC Round 34. And then we received notice after receiving notice of award, and then we received notice that due to COVID-19, that that money is being withheld. In conversations with Michelle Hire, who's my contact, contact under District 18, that at some point it will be released again. But during the, due to the current situation that the state has kind of, is circling the wagons and restricting monies coming out of OPWC, and that's statewide. And that in particular is with, and I'm going to lean on Bob Hetty just for a minute. There's LTIP, which is Local Transportation, and then there's Skip, which is State Capital Improvement Program, I believe. And it was the Skip projects, if I'm not mistaken, that, that they didn't release the funding. And that's what we were applying for. Is that accurate, Director Hetty?
Yes, Mayor, I believe so. The, they, in the notices they sent, they said we should have information July 1st or sometime thereafter. That budget bill, or that capital spending bill does include economic development, jobs creation. So would be surprised if it's not taken up sometime here near future. It's basically been awarded and they've been awarding that program for 30 years. They just have not appropriated the funds yet.
Thank you.
And I'll just remind council and the public that, as President Isley mentioned, the, this is, the State Infrastructure Bank loan is zero interest for 12 months and then the first payment is not due until 30 months. So knock on wood that we'll be out of this current pandemic and back into a normal period of time and be able to, be able to, to deal with our debt and, without emergency, without being in an emergency crisis. Any other comments? President Isley?
And some personnel? Chairman Crowell, I did, I did want to comment something along the line of schedule. So the way that this project is set up that is, will help with the current crisis. So the utility relocations with Columbia Gas and AEP would occur late summer into fall. And no major street project work would start until February of next year. That being said, that means we won't have bills in, large bills from the contractor until 2021. So that, that helps with our, our cash flow without paying funds out of our, our street improvements funds. And as well as that loan payment isn't due until 30 months. So we wouldn't see, not only would we not be laying out large sums of money for construction until next year, we wouldn't have to get that loan payment for two and a half years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Right. So are we finished with finance and personnel?
Yes, all finished.
Okay. So I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, especially Auditor Heck for joining us and, and Public Works Director Robert Hetty. I know it was a long meeting. And to thank the, the public for joining in on the conversation with us by remote. And I know that we're, we're about ready to close out, but I know that Mayor Patterson wants to, has a closing statement for us closing out tonight.
Thank you, President Isley. I appreciate that. I, I really want to make a plea to the viewing audience tonight and as well the council. You can certainly be effective in helping me voice and message what my concern is. And I believe it's the concern of some of you on council as well, is that last weekend, we had a fair amount of activity here in the city of Athens, as was expected. And a lot of people at the last minute running to some of our larger retailers, Kroger, Walmart, elsewhere, to pick up things as our off-campus student housing residents were coming back to pick up some of their things. There was a lot of activity. We have extra dumpsters that are deployed all through the student dense, high density areas, which has been effective. But what, what my plea is for the citizens of Athens is if you need to do grocery shopping or picking up sundries, you know, your personal effects, whatever, from the grocery store or from any store, please do it tomorrow through Thursday. Do it early, get it done. And I also strongly encourage and recommend that, that you also, you know, shelter in place a little bit harder. I know it hurts. I know it's a real bummer. But the more we can get ahead of any potential flare up here in the city of Athens, which we've been holding fantastically at three. But again, we have individuals who are coming from across the region, across the state, across state lines. We really have no way to know where people are coming from, nor do we know what they're bringing with them. And so I just want to share that with the viewing audience and with council, you know, to please help me get the word out to where people, you know, get through this weekend safely. Following that, we do have, the weekend after is move in. And I'm really kind of hoping that that just kind of gets stretched out a little bit because it doesn't, just because you signed on the dotted line, doesn't mean you necessarily have to start, you know, moving all your things into an apartment. all your things into an apartment under the new fiscal year for your lease or whatever. So again, I'm just encouraging everyone just to please stay safe, be smart, and get out early to where you're in the grocery store. For all of our older adults, older seniors, please take advantage of being able to get that sweet spot, of being able to go to Kroger first thing in the morning when everything is, you know, newly sanitized and ready for you. And then for the rest of us, I guess maybe I am a senior, I don't know. You know, again, shop earlier than you normally would to get the things that you need so that you're avoiding the rush that will be happening at a lot of our larger retailers this weekend. Thank you, Councilmember, President Nysley. I appreciate the time.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, and we'll be back next.